What's that line?
These cameras.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I said. I don't think it's gonna work in a real. Well, he'll tell you all this probably. Ten o'clock.
Occupational licenses, I haven't seen any.
How you doing?
Okay.
All right.
Who's that goat bitch? He's not coming. He wants to review who he can be next one.
Yeah, he's in, uh, Branson.
Yeah, he's out of state.
I guess. I thought it was because of that, uh, resolution. What they said that he couldn't go out of there. I told them, just honestly, whether you're my brother or not. The paper, the resolutions says no public housing. What's public housing? I don't know.
Is that, would that be considered a problem?
I don't know. I mean, does public housing project or something? I mean, what is that thing? And yeah, that was probably really people that don't understand. Cause I saw my end there. Where's public housing?
Listen, next to you, probably buy it. That's how you control the narrative.
Look what Dixon did. She bought those lots of apartments.
Exactly.
You sweep them perhaps.
That's what we do in the country. If you don't put somebody next to you, you buy it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I wouldn't see no problems.
All right, six o'clock, the meeting will come to order. We'll have the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, the council, George Trump. Mister Trump.
Join me with the our father.
Our father.
Lord, heaven, thou be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Uh, one correction, uh, number eight is being removed from the agenda. Any other additions or removal?
Yes, sir, I would love, for twelve A, I would like to put on there to ratify, uh, two firemen for, uh, for, uh, full time hire.
What does it again do?
Ratified to hire two full timers for the fire department.
Okay.
We were supposed to put it on there, but it was, the office was closed on Friday.
Is that twelve, huh?
Anyone else have any changes to the agenda? If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion, uh, Mister Carl, second by Mister Danny.
Yes.
Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item three, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mister Mike.
I'll second.
Second by Mister Anita. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item four, delegation, five minute limit, anyone that wants to address the council and myself at this time.
Fellow council and ladies and gentlemen, uh, as you know, if you don't know, I'm Deborah Mose and I'm here with Phoenisha Ford, my neighbor on Overton Street. And, uh, we're on a campaign to clean up our districts with our councilman in the city. District three and four in particular. And I, before I begin, I want to thank the council for everything that's been done since the last time we've been here. We do see the improvement within grass being cut, some abandoned properties being torn down, amen, hallelujah. And so I want to thank you for that. I believe it's always good to start with something good, been complaining all the time. So yesterday, Phoenisha and I also walked Overton Street, picked up trash, because we're determined to keep Overton Street, keep our district clean. So we're doing our best to help. So, um, what we asking for is a plan, a legal plan. What do we as citizens need to do to evict someone? We call the police most often, they can say, you know, and I know they are tired of coming back and forth, back and forth. Most of it's the same people. But we need a process, because just going to city hall and filing suit, no. If we haven't executed the steps that we need to do, or you need to do as a city body, then it's not gonna stand up in court. So that's one of the things we're asking for. What do we need to do?
I hate to interrupt you, but.
Please don't.
The individual that you're speaking about, I have the letter right here, for me in chief to deliver it. I just got it from Mister Donovan. I went there twice this week.
Oh, I know.
I went there yesterday, he was home, but I was on another call. He would give us time.
Sure, but I mean with anybody, there are others, but you know, he's our biggest pain on Overton. And he owns three properties. He doesn't cut the grass in any of them. They got the trash, so it's bigger than just Mister so and so, I won't mention his name, but he has properties everywhere and they are all a mess.
Yeah.
So, but with that, if you can entertain a private meeting or something, we like to know, is it possible to hire a code enforcement officer? Don't have to work every day, once a month might do the job to alleviate the police officers from having to go on over there and blah, blah, no, you can't find these people to help out. Some cities do have them, what do they do? They go around enforcing the code. Once or twice a week, once a month. But if we have the funds, that may alleviate a lot of the problems that we're having in finding people, catching up with people, they'll know you have other jobs to do as a superintendent or supervisor and what you do. This is thought. But I think this may also help and alleviate a lot of the problems. We can rather call the code enforcement officer rather than bothering the police officers who are busy, and most of the time, these fools want to open the door anyway. You can't find them, you can't catch them, you can't do anything. You know, they're plain possum, and as soon as you leave, we see them come out their house. But they may help, even if it's just twice a month. Properties, you don't cut your grass, okay, you're not, the property needs to be taken care of. I'm just saying, that's a thought. If we can afford, and I think we can find a few dollars somewhere to help with a code enforcement officer. We also, like I said, we picked up trash. We would re-request to have a do not litter sign on Overton. We care. If we have some available, put us one, and we know exactly where we want it at. If you have speed bumps, cause you know, Overton is just a drag street. Once you pass Jeanie Greenhouse, I'm sorry. There's nothing else left, and they put the metal to the pedal and they fly it all the way to the park. But we know, put it by Old River Church, it's gonna slow down a lot of that, and that's all they do, up and down the street, speeding, 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 throwing garbage. So, that's all I have today, perhaps Phoenisha, and, uh, would like to say something else.
I was just wanna ask about the status of the properties that I listed.
But, but.
Yes, we already.
So.
Yeah, I did the letter, he picked it up.
That's all I have.
I did the letter, I picked it up, we just happened to find that, I seen him there yesterday, but I was on, going to another property down there through the tree, and I couldn't catch up with him. I can't stand all the.
No, that's what we're saying. No.
But as soon as I can get to him, I have the letter, we, so me in chief will.
I understand.
Mr. Depp, you know, I gotta give it to Rondell. Anything that any of the council members give Rondell, an dilapidated house, or a piece of property, whatever, that needs to be taken care of, he stays on top of it and.
No, they really can.
We're not saying that's not happening.
If they, I mean, they are, like I said, they're calling, of course, because it, yeah, it's not anything like that.
Just a lot.
I call the police all the time, I called them just last weekend several times, cause someone came to my house naked, using my water and everything, and I mean, they're, they're very responsible, like I said, maybe enforcement.
What we're doing, you know, when, when Mister Toric or Mister Danny reported a house that needs to be torn down, and the other day, if y'all go down by Overton all the way at the end, where that old nightclub was.
Oh, I saw it.
We went ahead and.
I'm rolling.
Went ahead and took, took care of that, a- and, you know, Mister Danny stays on top of it, you know, in his area, and Mister Toric does. We're doing it as, as fast as we can. You gotta line everything up and, you know.
I'm not saying you're not, that's what I'm saying, thanks for what's going on.
Your, your grandma raised me in that neighborhood, Miss Ruby.
I know, I know, Miss Lemoine.
I know that neighborhood well.
Well, this is what we're saying. But we want to help, though, we, we can help, I don't want to be the one with the pistol knocking on the door. But I feel, what do we need to do, we can help ourselves out. A code enforcement officer, it doesn't mean to do it once a month, we still ahead of where we are.
Well, I, I, I think Ron, Rondell is pretty well our code enforcement officer, cause he stays on top of all that stuff, and any one of the council members that'll give him a house that needs to be taken care of, he stays on top of it till it's taken care of. And he came last week and talked to me about the camper that was on that empty lot. And, and, you know, it's just the process and the steps that you have to take to go through.
Let's try.
Yeah.
We want the do not litter, like past Jeanie.
Put two of them on the street, on each end, yeah.
Yeah, and, and coming from the other end, we go all the way, you know. I don't understand litter, I've never done it.
Two do not, uh, litter signs, two do not litter signs, one on each end, and with the, of course, with the final mark and everything.
Do you have a speed bump?
You have any speed bumps?
You can take the one off the, uh, one down by Mister, uh.
Take one of them.
Mister Clarence on my street, you can take that.
All, one of them off of, uh, Angeles, we got, have six of them over there.
Six.
You can take that one from, uh, down by Mister Clarence, and put over there.
Overton is a speed drag, so.
And, and Miss Deborah, to add to it, you know, the council knows, and I know, that we got six hundred forty-five thousand dollars grant to go ahead and start tearing down some of those old dilapidated houses. So, it's gonna be done pretty rapidly.
It's a slow process, but.
Yes, uh, well, we all understand that, but, you know, we would like to see, if possible, what's the list? Why can't the list of what's been selected by the council, whoever selected it, be put in the newspaper? Why can't we say, no name, these properties are scheduled to be, you know, just like we put, uh, you get, maybe taken off the voter registration list, so it can't, with names, so I feel we can list a property.
But you, you, you got to go ahead and, and, and notify them, and, and, and a city attorney will tell you the same thing.
Okay.
If they just do, just a little bit of approve, uh, improvement on that house.
That's true.
You can't touch it.
You can't just put it on there and say that you're gonna tear it down.
So there's some steps that you have to go through.
I didn't say tear it down, I said, identify there's a problem. Yeah, I got you, I said, identify there's a problem.
It's a, it's a, a very extreme measure, going and tearing down somebody's house. That's why the law prescribes you have to follow numerous steps, you have to have an engineer going there, has to declare it, uh, you know, unsafe, uh, and a threat to public health, is a lot of steps have to be taken.
So do y'all put together like a condemnation list of those houses that comes down?
I don't know if there, we have a list, but.
We only got a list because of this grant, and we had to have so many on the list, and we went with some of the worst ones. But we don't know if an inspector would come and say, okay, this, we gonna be condemned. We don't know, they could go in and say, look, if they spent so much money on this, they can live there. I mean, just the one on Crest, when the tree failed to, they wouldn't condemn that house.
Yeah, just being ugly.
Yeah.
Is not condemnable.
That's why we asked, what, my first question, what is the process?
I think she's asking if we can just put something in the paper, just saying that this prop, this ve, this property is a problem.
Well, no, I, I like to have it in writing, so we all will know, I, I really would. I mean, I think the citizenry of the Marksville need to know. What is the process, because we can stop calling these guys so much, if we ever know that's already on the, uh, kind of, stop bothering them, it's the same one day, we've already called them about, you know? This kind of stuff.
I can give you the Marksville ordinances that shows every single step that has to be followed whenever you condemn a property.
Yeah.
And I can get you email from Phoenisha.
So we can stop calling these people, you already got that, or you already have that, so we know. Mister Lemoine, he's already got that one, so we won't be calling about the same people doing the same thing over and over. You know, I, that's what I'm saying.
Rondell and I have been fighting with one, I can tell you, for, what, a year and a half, Rondell? The one on, on, uh.
Yes, it, it takes a while, been a year and a half, and we finally, finally.
We found it getting to a close.
And we just got to it, and I was in to talk with the lady yesterday. She called about it, tearing down, she, he confirmed it, and we've been working on this a year and a half.
Oh, yeah. And finally, and there's people living in it.
Yes.
And it's, it's, I wouldn't let a dog live in it, to be honest with you.
Next.
Hi, good evening, I'll be quick, my name is Crystal Adams, I'm here on behalf of the Rotary Club of Avoyles, early, asking for approval to have our annual Mardi Gras parade. This year, we're looking at Sunday, February sixteenth, for a one o'clock parade. We would follow the same exact parade route as usual, and of course, we're asking, uh, for the city's approval, as well as the help from sheriff's department, uh, for that, and if it's all good, we normally have vehicles, uh, floats, trailers, ATVs, horses. Um, we weren't sure if golf carts were allowed, so that's what we're asking.
Chief, you gonna coordinate those dates with the, uh. So what day? February sixteenth.
February sixteenth.
February sixteen, that's Sunday, one P M.
Be the Mardi Gras parade?
One P M.
One P M. One P M.
One P M. Thank you, man.
Thank you.
February sixteen.
Anybody else on the delegate?
Mardi Gras parade.
Now, good evening, seem to be up here every month, you know. Uh, I'm here on behalf of K A T B radio, uh, we're gonna be celebrating our seventieth anniversary, uh, during the month of October, and on Oc, the twenty-fifth of October, we'll be having an open house. Uh, that open house will run from eleven to two in the afternoon. Uh, we are working on getting dignitaries, uh, we did put a, a, a request in for the governor to come. I'm just waiting on that, that to come back, and, uh, we want to make sure that we coordinate with, with our, our police, uh, with our police, uh, workers here, and, uh, make sure that that's coordinated for security. Uh, again, we've, we've been on the air, uh, since nineteen fifty-four, and it's a, it's a big thing for us, and we, we'd like, uh, everyone to attend, especially our city council and our mayor. Questions?
What do you say, Tom?
That'll be October the twenty-fifth, Friday, October the twenty-fifth. And, uh, I was just kinda telling, telling Crystal before the meeting, we, we dug up some of the archives from the twenty-fifth anniversary. Uh, and so, and a lot of, uh, local, uh, local celebrities are, are on these, on these tapes, we converted them to digital, we'll run those, uh, for a couple hours on the air, uh, writing the boards on it. Uh, uh, there's a couple more that, that, uh, that are on there, I think it'd be pretty nice to hear a little bit of nostalgia, that we'll be running for uninterrupted for a couple of hours on the air.
So that's October twenty, twenty fi, open house?
October twenty-fifth.
Eleven to two.
At the station.
At the station, K A L B.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Friday. Okay, anybody else? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Miss Jen.
I guess this is where I talk, uh, Jennifer Falls. Um, first, I want to say, I really admire Ms. Mose and, uh, Deborah and Phoenisha for the, uh, the work that you did on the road, uh, I admire you for doing that, I might have to try to join in with you. Uh, what I wanted to say is that, uh, I was really excited at the police jury last night, that they hired an abatement officer, um, to be addressing, um, a lot of the litter, cause of course, it's, it's a big problem in all of the parish. And so, it might be something to sort of follow up, to see how that might be going about, how effective they are. What their attempt to do is to, um, establish the litter court, so that there won't be a backlog, that, uh, these kind of cases have to be handled in courts that are also dealing with criminal cases and so on, so, um, the justice of the peace, uh, a justice of the peace is able to enforce, uh, in any district in the parish, not just in their own, so, um, they're establishing a litter court, they hire the abatement officer, um, who will also be working somewhat with wildlife and fisheries, so, um, you know, we'll see what kind of efforts, I'm optimistic, and, um, you know, some of that, I know that y'all adopted some of the ordinances, uh, a couple of years ago, the new ordinances that, uh, the police jury had adopted, so, um, perhaps there'll be a way to work together with the, the police jury and the abatement officer, I'm not certain about that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Jen. Okay. Number five, city engineers report.
Thank you, mayor and council. I will go through my report, and I've got a few pictures for everyone to look at, to see what we've got going on at the sewer pond.
TV didn't turn off. Okay, so, going through my list, uh, just giving updates on things that have changed since last time we met. On our water sector project, our phase one, that's our work at Sewer Pond, that's the picture you see there. I'm gonna back up one, one picture, and it's gonna be a little video, and I want you guys to see how much vegetation there was around the pond, so then you can get an idea of the change. So you'll see, you'll see there's a lot of growth. As we get further to the back, there'll be some trees, and the reason this is like this is because over the years, the banks have eroded, the, the, uh, the roads got narrower, and the city just wasn't able to maintain it over time. It's not, it's not real long, it's about a minute, I want y'all to really see on the backside how overgrown it was, and then you can start getting a little appreciation for, for the work at Sewer Pond. Alright, you can see, you start seeing some pretty large trees along the bank. Alright, so that's pretty much it, and then this next, this next one is going to be once all the trees were cleared, so just kinda an overview, you can see now, you can see the road all the way around, and it was cleared up enough to where we were actually running eighteen wheelers around it to, to dump the dirt. So what we were doing in the project, we cleared all the trees back, and we're starting to build those levees back up again, but also cap them with some clay, something that can handle that wave action against them, handle some water, and won't start eroding, like, as you can see, the red dirt there was just some river sand. Alright, right here, you'll see where we went in, the contractor took his dozer, he laid back the vegetation, he pushed back the sludge, so he could actually get in there and work with his equipment, which you'll see, I think, in this next picture. Right, right here, and it's just pretty self-explanatory, we're starting to put some of the clay on top, and you can see there the difference in the material types, so the gray material that the equipment's on is the clay, and what was there, the existing materials, the sandy river silt, that's going to erode if we don't cap it with something. So, that went along, he's actually made it all the way around, that's kinda your finished product there, with the exception of we got a little bit of dress-up work to do. And that, again, kind of another snapshot of your finished project, so you can see, it's starting to look pretty good. Right there, you, if you, if you could see it well, you'll see that now the levee is gray, instead of, um, the red color. Right there, in the left, bottom left-hand corner, you see a little island we built. The plan right there is under phase two to build a pump station and an aerator, so it's gonna do two things, it's gonna allow a spot for the septic pump trucks to dump, and then disperse that sewer into the pond, as opposed to into the corners like you see up there in the top, the top of the screen. And it's also gonna provide some aer, aeration for that pond. So, that work, they'll probably be done with that pond by the end of the week, or that's the plan anyways, and we'll be probably putting seed on it next week. Alright, here is another part of the same project, and this is where you'll see, it's kinda, it's kinda hard to see, you see my truck right there at the bottom, I'm parked to buy a pipe with a gate on it, and let me just go forward, so right here, you can see there's a gate, let me move my little cursor, if y'all can see it, right here's a gate, that controls the water flow going into, and I'm gonna back up, you see this, this pretty looking concrete structure here, that's the chlorination basin, so the water comes through that gate, through this pipe, goes into chlorination basin, gets chlorinated, comes back to the pump station, gets pumped out to the river. What we're doing, there used to be a wooden platform going out to that valve, and it is, it was rotted, uh, it wasn't there anymore, so what we're doing now, we're pouring some concrete footings, and we're gonna install an aluminum walkway on top of it, we're going to have to replace that valve, that little, uh, knife gate valve there, because it's all rusted out, and when we're done, we'll have a new aluminum walkway going to a valve, the guys will be able to go out there, stay dry, stay out of the sludge and sewer, and open and close that valve as needed. Another little picture of it, so he's got his footings poured, he's gotta pour his walls, and he's expected to do that tomorrow. I think the walkway, they'll be finished with it next week, so that, that is covers pretty much everything that we have on the construction as it's going right now, we got some more work to do, but we hadn't started, started on it yet. Okay, the second phase of that project, if y'all remember, we were advertising for bids. That bid date has passed, we did not receive any bids. We've heard from some contractors that one of the reasons we didn't get bids is because their number was higher than our budget. We're working with a contractor now, getting him, asking him for his numbers, to try and figure out what we can reduce in the project, what we can value engineer, what we gotta take out, all that good stuff, so I'm hoping between now and next meeting, we'll get that figured out, we'll get this project back on, back on the street, and, you know, receive bids probably sometime, best case scenario, into November, something like that. Okay, next on my list is our L W I project, that's the Bayou Pre-Drainage Project, that, I reported last time I was here, that so, surveyors had historic work, they're about thirty percent complete, and I expect they probably got the rest of the month, um, before it can be deliverable from them. Next is John Landry Road and Hill Delane Fire Hydrants. I think everyone knows, we've installed two of them, we still have two on the yard that need to be installed. I understand that the water department is dealing with some issues right now, I think once they're done with that, the plan is to go ahead and install them other two that we have on the yard. Now, since then, or since our last meeting, we received our F Y twenty-three, twenty-four L gap grant in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars. That grant is, uh, already set aside or, or planned to buy some more hydrants and install them. They were about four or five thousand dollars a hydrant, it's about fifteen hundred dollars to install them, so, you know, maybe we'll get another three in. We can't spend that money yet till we get the contracts fully executed back from the state, and as soon as we do that, I'll notify Rondell and John, and we can go ahead and order those hydrants and, and get that hopefully underway.
And I, I noticed after that, on this one, that we can use refurbished, uh, hydrants, so we'll be able to buy more of it.
Yes, thank you, Rondell, I had that on my list and I forgot to mention.
And Rondell, those refurbished hydrants, they do come with a warranty, right?
They do come with a warranty.
What's the difference in the warranty of a new one, the cost of a refurbished and a new one?
It's about half, half involved.
Half? What's the, the life of it?
Three-year warranty on it, and the guy we're dealing with now, that comes to do the hydrons, he's a one-six.
So you, the, the refurbished, how long does it last?
I was saying, my perspective is that...
Okay, have a new one? Okay.
I think they changed all the working ports.
Okay, guys, next is Water Sector Phase Two. There is another round of Water Sector money. The rules are, if you've got a Water Sector grant for your system, you can't get another one. But we got a sewer grant, we didn't get a water grant. So I believe, after reading the rules, that we are eligible to apply for water system improvements. It's a twenty-five percent match, I think y'all put up more than that last time, but y'all had your ARPA money. So anyway, it's a twenty-five percent local match, the application's gonna open October twenty-eighth, it's gonna be due by December twelfth. Maximum grant amount, five million dollars. My plan is to get with Rondale and John Buckles and figure out what's the problems, do we have a viable project or not. I won't recommend that we apply for something if I don't think it's got a chance of being funded, so I gotta meet with those guys and see what's out there, what we have, and maybe what we can apply for. I'll have more information next month. We talked a little bit about our clearance program, as the mayor said, we got four hundred and sixty-something thousand dollars of grant funds, and I am preparing to begin those inspections, and I'm hoping to knock out a few this month. But what that's gonna do, that's just gonna get the process going, as somebody mentioned, it's gonna be a pre-time consuming process, but as soon as we start, as soon as we make something happen. Okay, next is your, okay, next is, I'm gonna come back to this, capital outlay. Last year, we submitted a capital outlay funding request in the amount of seven hundred forty-seven thousand dollars for fire, citywide fire protection improvements, and what that would've been was some fire hydrants, maybe upsizing some lines, you wouldn't really know, we're just putting it out there. I'd like to resubmit that application for y'all, however, I'd like to reduce the cost for two reasons. Last time, we requested twenty-five percent match, the twenty-five percent match has a bunch of conditions that you go with it, I don't think we'll get it, I'm sorry, I don't know if I said this, we requested a waiver of the twenty-five percent match. I don't think we're gonna meet the conditions to get that waiver, so I do believe we'll have to put up twenty-five percent. My recommendation is, guys, let's bring that cost down, let's apply for something maybe a little more realistic, in the two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollar range, and I think that's more realistic for two reasons. One, we might have a better chance of getting some money because it's a smaller project. From capital outlay two, the local match is anywhere from fifty thousand dollars to sixty-two thousand dollars, depending on if y'all wanted to go two hundred thousand or two hundred fifty. That is a resolution that I have on the agenda tonight, so if y'all want to make a decision on that, then I will fill out the resolution, put that we will do system-wide fire protection improvements in the amount, and I will go ahead and start working on the application and submit it. Anybody have any questions?
What amount would be, would y'all be good?
Would be to replace the old fire hydrants.
Yeah, I mean, we could do whatever we needed to, but it would be geared towards fire protection. It may have to be capital improvements out there, you know, in the field, as opposed to buying equipment for firefighters, but I think the needs are there.
And I think we, we said last meeting, we still have a bunch of them from seventeen or eighteen, wherever.
Nineteen, nineteen on up.
Okay, I mean, wouldn't be a bad idea to go ahead and try.
So, guys, if y'all wanna, if we do wanna apply for fire protection, it just boils down to how much do we wanna apply for? Again, I'm somewhere between two hundred and two hundred fifty. That's kinda my comfort zone, it doesn't really mean a whole lot, but it's just where I'm at.
Let's go to two hundred thousand, that way I'm...
Well, that, that would cover number seven.
Yes, sir, yeah, I did, I apologize, I jumped the gun a little bit.
So that, that would be number seven, so you need to know the amount for us to go ahead and put into that resolution?
Yeah, what he did is two hundred or two hundred fifty thousand. No? Two hundred or two fifty?
Two hundred, I mean, if it's a longer amount, would possibly get us a chance to get in. Yeah, I'll make the motion to go with the two hundred thousand.
I think we could do any of it, whatever would benefit, you know, our fire rating. I'd say if you had a bunch of...
You think we're good with two hundred or two fifty?
I, I think that's a comfortable number, guys, we're not, we're not gonna do, we're not gonna replace everything in the city, of course, but if we get two hundred thousand dollars this round, and maybe in a couple of years, another two hundred thousand's a story.
You're two hundred thousand, you're the water manager, two hundred.
Marcus?
On the two hundred thousand, would that fall into the refurbished one, or are those...
I don't think it would matter, I actually like the idea to refurbish, I think it's smart.
Because you could actually get more for your money.
Exactly, exactly.
Right.
And I agree with Rondale, I'm sure they take...
We do the work ourselves, or with y'all company?
No, we focus on the digitalize, but we have some one that come in hot now. I think we need for that.
Yeah, I made the motion, I made the motion already.
Uh, two hundred and eighty resolution, uh, motion, you want to second it then?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, that's for number seven, for the capital outlay application resolution. We got a motion by Mr. Torrey, second by Mr. Danny, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, number six, while you up there?
Yes, sir.
FY twenty-four, twenty-five, CDBG Public Facilities Program Resolution. I need a motion for that.
And what's the, that's the...
You wanna go over it just briefly?
Yeah, I can tell you all real quick, it's the same resolution we adopted about nine months ago, the difference is I added the cost. So the state put a new stipulation, it said, whenever you select your engineer and your grant admin, you have to put the cost, so if you look on... On the first page, down towards the bottom, item two, at the end of that statement, it says seventy-one thousand, five hundred, and then, I'm sorry, I backed up a little bit, number one says forty-five thousand, that's, that's what I added. Those numbers were already agreed upon, and what, the reason you're putting that up is because you buy some extra points with that grant program. Again, it's something that was decided on, I think, in May of this year, I just revised it to add those costs.
All right, I need a motion, in a second.
I'll make a motion.
Second by Mr. Danny, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, that's it?
One more thing, just kinda a side note, I know there was some discussion about setting up a special meeting for the Bayou Prairie Pifra meeting, I just wanna tell y'all my advice, because I've been in those meetings, it will be a pretty lengthy presentation from the engineer, it's not gonna be me, but from the engineer. I would advise y'all to set up a special meeting for it, because I could see the meeting lasting somewhere in the neighborhood of an hour or more.
Mr. Carl, can you go ahead and get with the lady and see when, when it would be most convenient for her to meet and we'll set up a meeting?
Yep.
Well, I think she did say it in the email.
Yeah, she did, but it wouldn't give us the twenty-four hours needed to be able to announce the special meeting.
Yeah, because she asked for Tuesday of next week.
But I think she also...
Tuesday next week?
Yes.
Okay, I'll check that out.
She asked for Tuesday of next week, if we couldn't do it tomorrow.
I think she put the twenty-second or the twenty-fourth out there.
Okay, I'll refer back to my email.
And I just wanted to let y'all know, that was my opinion, I think if y'all put it and add it on to your regular meeting with all your normal business, it's gonna be pretty long.
So Carl, you'll get with it?
Yes.
All right.
All right, this is all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Marcus.
Item nine, Kingdom Advancement Ministries, Mr. Danny?
Oh, yes, sir. This group of young ladies, they couldn't make it tonight, they're asking to do their cancer, their fourth annual cancer walk on the twenty-sixth of October at nine AM. I got with chief, he said he'd be able to take care of it for them, they're gonna call him and give him the route, it'll be downtown, nine AM.
Okay.
What, what is that?
Cancer walk.
It's a cancer walk, their fourth annual cancer walk.
What day?
On October the twenty-sixth at nine AM.
All right. Chief, y'all go ahead and coordinate that with it.
Chief, I have a call tomorrow.
Item ten, approval of the intergovernmental agreement for the tax collection with the sheriff's office. Is this to renew the tax, the way that the sheriff collects his taxes for us?
The adverb, taxing the property tax.
Correct, and it's just to renew, he was doing it last year, and we have to renew it every year. So I need a motion to...
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mike.
I'm listening to the session.
Second by Mr. Torrey.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dean, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Mayor, just, you said every year, but I think it reflected four years in there.
Yeah, four years.
Yeah, we, we just renew it, when it, when it comes time to renew, we, we go ahead and pass a motion to go ahead and...
Right, right.
Yep, all right. Item eleven, discuss the OSHA temporary housing.
Mr. Joey Frank sent this out, said that what it is, is in the event of a disaster, if someone's home is tore up, tornado, hurricane, that if the city would allow someone to pull a trailer on their lot till they get their house rebuilt.
So, so let's correct that, it's not someone, it's gonna be, not Homeland Security, but it's gonna be FEMA. FEMA is gonna be the one who's gonna be supplying the trailer, the camper or whatever, in order for them to live in it for a year, and then they're gonna take it back, or whatever the case may be, once they get their house built.
Is that what Joey told you, or is it an individual?
Well, no, it's not the individual.
It's not the individual.
He spoke to me personally on it also.
He just said that if you had property damage and stuff, you know, you could haul a trailer in, he didn't tell me that FEMA was paying for the trailer, but, you know, if it, if it is, it's through FEMA.
Correct.
And it's a temporary, but you can either opt, you can either opt in or opt out of the program.
So if, if, if somebody has their house, like the hurricanes that they're having in Florida and everywhere else, if somebody's house is wiped out, the individual can't haul a trailer, it has to be FEMA?
No, no, that's not what it's saying, what this paper right here is, is asking permission for the people to do it based off of FEMA. I mean, if we're gonna allow people to do it on the outside of this right here, that's, that's on the council.
Yeah, because it's an ordinance.
Right, because we have ordinance on it, but...
This is just an event, it's temporary housing and shelter assistance program.
Correct, for natural disasters, not because if their house flood, or if it catch a fire or anything, this is temp, straightforward, uh, natural disaster.
Right. How long, how long do the house take?
A year, a year, it's a year for them to get it built, and then after that, it'd have to be removed. And I believe that FEMA is the one who works, works through all of that.
No, that's, that's what he gave it right here, and there's, there's no language in there about that. So Craig, was, was Joey invited to the meeting tonight?
Yeah, he was, but he said he couldn't meet, couldn't make...
Can we table this until he comes and explains us the, back the things that we can and can't do? Because if, if we accept something, this, and it's just wide open, I mean, we had, there's no restrictions. Can we table it?
Can you mention something about most municipalities are opting out of?
Well, we've done, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the last time it was brought up, the council had voted on it the last time, to go ahead and do it. And again, it's just for natural disaster, if somebody's house destroyed, tornado, or hurricane, things of that nature, that's it.
I, I just don't accept something, and the council accepts something, that we can't get ourselves out of.
I'd like to get a clear explanation, but the form is intailing.
All right, we'll go ahead and table it till the next meeting.
And has Joey to come to the meeting?
All right, can you, yeah, Craig, can you request that Joey to come? Item twelve, discuss disciplinary action for city employees, Mr. Torrey?
Yeah, I'm looking through the policy and procedure manual, which hadn't been updated since two thousand, which we need to, we need to get that taken care of. But looking through the disciplinary action, when somebody gets suspended, or a write-up or anything of that nature, it sticks with them their whole career here. That, for, for somebody who has a lengthy, lengthy time here, and you get two or three write-ups within that timeframe, for instance, somebody who's been here twenty-five years, if they get, get three write-ups, they're subject to be terminated at this point in time. I, I would like to see it downgraded after a certain amount of time, the write-ups that they get, it's not gonna be used against them. I mean, it stays in the file, but it's not gonna be used against them towards termination.
Like an expulsion.
Correct, and I would think that the grace period would be anywhere between a year to possibly fifteen months or something of that nature. That way, again, it's not gonna come back and haunt them later on, if it's not for the same, you know, same thing.
I just think that we adopted that for a reason, I mean, if you got employees who's giving you trouble, I mean, if you got employees in the police department, on the city, or street workers, or fire department, if you're having problems, they know that if they have a problem, and if they're doing the right thing, there's no problem. But if you're doing the wrong thing, then you got a problem, no matter how, how long you stay, I mean, I don't think if you, you got a person, after, after a year, you just wipe it out, I mean, and over a ten-year period, he gets three, that's thirty write-ups, and you got a person that's been there for, for ten years that has thirty write-ups that you still have. I mean, that's why it's like it is, I mean, you do good, you don't have any problems, you do bad, you know, that, you got a problem.
Yeah, but it comes back for, for some of your workers, I mean, it might not have been, it, it could've been for something very simple, where it was a mistake or something, but that person had to get this write-up.
We haven't had any problems with it, nobody's been abusing it, nobody's been abusing of trying to write somebody up and getting rid of them, they get, they really get rid of themselves because they, they aren't doing the proper thing. But that's what we have on the books right now, and I just, I don't, I don't see why we need to deviate from that.
It used to be like that, and it was changed in two thousand and one, and they went back to the way it is now. They used to let workers work, after one year, a write-up was taken off, a suspension would stay on. It didn't work, it was changed by Dr. Richel and Dale Pernod, Mr. Alfred Channel, said right here.
Well, I mean, let's, instead of the write-ups, let's do the suspension. I mean, if you got three suspension, well, yeah, hey, you take that route and you go about your business, but with three write-ups, I mean, that...
I don't think we need to award somebody for doing something that's incorrect.
I'm not saying go back and do anything, I'm just saying from this point of view.
.............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
If they know they have a write-up, you're sort of holding their feet to the fire. If you loosen it up, they can say, well, I can go ahead and I get three write-ups. And after two or three years, it's off my record and you start it all over again, you know?
Well, well, Mayor, I would like to go ahead and make a make a motion and see how the council want to vote on it. I mean, and we can go three, we can go three years. After three years, it won't be counted against you.
But if they do it again within the three, that other one is activated again.
Correct, correct.
And also now they have two.
Correct. So I would like to make.
Got a motion, permission, Torrey?
I would like to make the motion, uh, that if you get a write-up, um, and and within the three years, if you don't get anything else, it will not be used against you, uh, unless you have a suspension of, uh, or something of that nature where it's a little more, uh, drastic.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Torrey? Okay, the motion dies with lack of a second. All right. Uh, item thirteen, financial statements and bills.
Oh, no, um, eleven, twelve A.
Twelve A, I'm sorry.
Ratification of, uh, two, two from part-time to full-time, uh, fire department. Uh, we advertised, uh, and the applicants that we got.
Yes, we ran it twice in the paper. And I have two part-timers who need to be ratified to full-time position. I have openings for two. One is certified firefighter, one and two. His name is Hayden Dickinson. And I have Clayton Jordan, Jr., who is not certified. Both are part-time employees now. They have been processed through City Hall. I have two who need to go to the Fire Academy next year. So Mr. Clayton Jordan would have a year to get your certification.
And the other guy who's not.
The other guy is not certified. He's already employed full-time.
Correct.
He's going to have to go to the Fire Academy.
Are the two individuals here?
One of them is.
One of them is Clayton.
Okay.
Clayton Jordan.
I'll make that motion, uh, to hire both of them.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Torrey, second by Mr. Carl. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I just want to touch bases on the, uh, the Fire Academy. The Fire Academy is in Alexandria, correct? And, um, it, we don't have to pay anything, uh, up for, uh, at all, correct? The only thing we'll be doing is.
It's going to be free to the city of Marksville, whereas previous, we would send them to Baton Rouge and it was thirty-eight hundred dollars a person.
Uh, the the only thing we will have to work out is the the new per dem rate as for them driving back and forth, uh, and meals.
Yes. And on those, on those two employees, uh, they would like to start the pay period of October twenty-eighth, as they need to give a two weeks notice to their previous employer.
No problem, make the motion, let them start. Motion by Mr. Danny?
Second.
Second, buddy.
Yes, well.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
What do you board?
Thirteen, financial statements and bills for September.
Chris. Chris, one thing you forgot about the hourly wages. With the start.
The hourly rate for the certified firefighter is going to be thirteen oh five. And for the non-certified firefighter, it would be twelve dollars.
Same as the other guy?
Same as the others, the other high rates.
Thank you, Griffin. Mr. Anita?
Okay, um, bills for September twenty twenty-four, City Hall, thirteen thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars, fifty-five cents. Police, twenty-seven thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. Fire, fifteen thousand two hundred seventy dollars and eleven cents. Street, seventy-four thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty-six cents. beautification, four thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Total and general fund, one hundred thirty-five thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. Sewer, thirty-four thousand two hundred ninety dollars and eighty cents. AWC, fifty-seven thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars. Water, twenty-nine thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Total, one hundred twenty-one thousand eighty-five dollars and three cents. Grand total, two hundred fifty-six thousand two hundred eight dollars and fifty cents. I make a motion these bills be approved and paid.
I'll second it.
Motion by Miss Anita, second by Mr. Torrey. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you, Miss Anita.
Yes, ma'am.
Department reports, Mr. Craig, Secretary of Treasury.
Sales tax collected for September twenty twenty-four, three hundred twenty-four thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars eighty-three cents. Of that, the one percent is one hundred sixty-two thousand three hundred thirteen dollars and ninety-two cents. The high percent, eighty-one thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars ninety-six cents. The public safety, eighty-one thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars ninety-five cents. A decrease of six point four seven percent from August of twenty-four. When we collected three hundred forty-five thousand six hundred forty-two dollars forty-four cents. An increase of three point three three percent from September of twenty-three, when we collected three hundred fourteen thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Thank you, Craig. Uh, Mr. Estes, Police Chief?
Okay, for the month of, uh, September, the police department handled four hundred and forty-three complaints, worked seventeen accidents with five injuries. Issued twenty-three citations, made twenty-six arrests. There were seven drug arrests and two cases were turned over to the DA's office. The city didn't collect anything from city court. Police jury collected one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, Chief. Oh, Mr. Chris? I'm sorry, Jason, I'm sorry.
Eric, also, I just want to present, I gave everybody a little packet from, uh, emergent enforcement solutions, that's the camper tickets. To move forward with the, uh, connection from the state recovery, we have to go into agreement with them, a two-year contract. Nothing has changed from what we're doing now. All their new customers, since we, they grandfathering us in, since we've been with them for a while. All the new places they go on, they make them sign this contract. And there's a few other fees that are added to it to go to this recovery. Since we've been with them, they waiving the fees for us, but we do have to sign the contract saying we're going to stay with them for them to do the recovery part for us. And I'd ask the mayor and council if he can sign this contract to move forward a little.
Yeah, I need a motion that we go.
Jonathan, did you look over the?
I I did, and everything was good.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Miss Anita?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mike. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I abstain.
Thank you. I abstain as well.
All right, Mr. Chris, Fire Department?
I forgot to mention on the two hires, they have been interviewed by myself, Fire Commissioner and the Civil Service Director. Fire report for September. We ran twenty-three calls, fifteen were in the city, seven out of the city. One mutual aid call consisted of. One service call, seven structure alarms, two brush fires, one landing zone, three vehicle accidents, five medical emergencies, two auto extracations, and one trash fire. We've been doing fire prevention this week at the schools. It's fire prevention month. Also, the fire alarm at the Batum Center hasn't been certified since last year. The, uh, city manager got bitten. And I call companies to come and certify it. It'll be here next year. It should be done one second year. It's been over twelve months. So we're going to get that certified. I think that was as per first insurance.
Yeah, our insurance, they, we had two things they found, it was the fire extinguishers and the fire alarm. They, we did the fire extinguishers already. And I'm in touch with them to fire them. I say do that and we can move forward and be ready with the insurance.
Okay.
Okay, and the last thing I have is we have mandatory hose tests and pump tests coming up. Uh, we have to have that annually. That's where the insurance rating.
Where are we going to do that at?
At the old treasure lot.
At the, okay.
Yeah, it's a vacant lot and it's the closest to the station.
When are we doing it?
It won't be on the weekend. No, it'll be, it'll be a weekday.
All right, Buckles, okay.
There's a shut-off valve in case something does happen.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Chloe?
For the month of September, we've been still cleaning covers and ditches. We dug twelve hundred foot of ditches. We're using a side cutter every day. And if you go on a law street, we had a lot of debris down, kind of breeding. The designated area. My animal count is fifteen. As we get them, and the reason it's fifty, we got nine cages. We had some puppies on the Briet Road right there. I think one dog had nine puppies. So that's why we have high count. Other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Chloe.
Item ditches is coming along well?
Oh, yeah.
Good deal.
In the month of September, we picked up a total of ninety bags of litter on the state roads. District one was thirty-four. District two, thirty-five. District three, forty-five. District four, fifty-seven. District five, sixty. For a total of three hundred and nineteen bags of litter. And we've been collecting, uh, a few canals and has sprayed them. So if y'all have any other ones that we haven't done, that we can do, let me know.
Now, one I talked to you about on, uh, Will.
This, uh, next few days, we're going to jump in.
Thank you, Sean. Mr. Rondell?
Tomorrow, Sean and Chris, y'all sending trucks. They're going to be riding two trucks. Their van and some issues today, it's going out to go to shop. So the next few days, we're doing trucks. But we already know they will be following each other. Sean will be driving one and we have someone else driving. Safety, on that, we're going to be doing a safety meeting around twenty thirty this month. It's going to be a quarterly meeting. Sewer, they did their storm war pollution prevention, uh, training last week. Again, inspection, everything is good. That's all I have.
Thank you, Rondell. Ms. Beverly?
The leak, the leak was fixed.
Yeah.
Behind, uh.
Dollar general?
Okay, for the month of September, we locked eight meters. Uh, made five of them final. Fifty-one has paid eleven still owe. And out of that, they lost, so made sixteen they had.
Thank you, Ms. Beverly.
Hello, Mr. Buckles. Adam is better. Past few months, we've been having an issue with businesses not carrying the water. Normally eighteen, this time it was ten. I went to each business and told them, I had them come take. I mean, they get a water bill just like that. I should have to go to the business and ask them to come take.
That's why I told you to cut them off the other day. They're not better than any individual.
No, if a business call, y'all, you're just going to go turn it off. And I told all of them, once we turn the water off at a business, I have to call the water. I have to call.
That's why I told you the other day to turn them off.
Yeah, can we take an extra step and send them a, the these businesses some type of letter and explain that to them?
Well, he went and seen him personally.
I went to each one.
And you talked to all of them?
Yeah.
Oh, well, hey, it is what it is, no?
Buckles?
For the month of September, uh, responded to one hundred and eighty-eight service calls, ran thirty-three profiles, repaired fifteen leaks and, uh, replaced one fire. Don't I have?
Thank you, Buckles. Mr. John?
I have one item that's involved in a lawsuit that is going to have to be done by executive session.
I'd like you to go ahead and and address the council on that. And I and I spoke to you briefly about it today, uh, with Buckles and Rondell, about our agreement that we had with the tribe to go ahead and we were going to give them the, uh, the fork. And in turn, we were going to go ahead and sell them the water. The last that I heard, and I talked to you about it today, was that we were in federal court. They had asked for two briefings to be submitted, one from Ward Three Water Works and one from the city of Marksville. And from what I understood, it was going to be done in a timely manner, like thirty days. But it still hasn't come to a decision of the federal judge. Well, can you, can you let us know where we stand or where we?
Basically, what happens is we we have two suits that are going on. We have one that's going on in tribal court and one that's going on in the federal court. Okay? The federal judge, we have submitted briefs, like you're talking about. Last time we went, it was just the attorneys. The federal judge was of the opinion that we needed to let the issue in tribal court play out before he got involved. So that's on hold. The issue with tribal court is they issued a written ruling in May. That ruling was in the city of Marksville's favor. And they filed for an appeal, but there's been no court date set. Uh, I've sent a email to the, uh, judge's office saying, hey, what's what's going on? Can we, can we get moving on this? So I should know something pretty soon.
So what's the suit that's in tribal court?
The suit in tribal court actually involves the World War Commission versus the Ward Three, uh, Ward District over who controls the water meter, uh, by McDonald's.
Yes.
On that corner right there.
Okay.
That that was the issue there. And it's an issue because that's the key to getting the water to the tribal grounds.
But one of the decisions that was made in tribal court from the judge was that the tribe is a sovereign nation and nobody can tell them, Booty can buy water for them.
That's correct. But that, the only problem is that judgment is not final yet. So we just have to push that over the line to get that finalized. Then after that, we'll be ready to move forward.
Okay, so you 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 emailed the judge today?
I did this morning.
Okay. All right.